I came in under the premise that we wanted to make agriculture a cornerstone of our economy going forward. You've seen the numbers on this, but how do we actually do this? So giving us a lot of thought, this is something I've been working on for probably a dozen years at this point agriculture, food and energy, putting it together. First of all, to have prosperous agriculture and thereby sustainable. Why do we do it and how are we going to get it done? First of all, there's a personal reason. Do you see the horses yet? There we go. Why do we do it for agriculture? When you talk to people from agriculture, there's an inherent lifestyle, a heritage, they enjoy it, but there also is a personal responsibility. Whether we're talking about cattle or if we're talking cucumbers, there's an inherent drive in people in agriculture of why they do agriculture. Then there's environmental stewardship standpoint. And I'll see that slide come up in a second. This is interesting doing this virtually. Do you see the, there we go. People in agriculture do agriculture for different reasons than most people in the community in society. I was, I was talking to agriculture to, I think some of you may know him. Jay Shider of the Shider School of Business. And Jay was asking me about agriculture and the capital investment, the return on investment. And after the conversation, he looked at me and says, Tim, so agriculture is your get rich real, real slow plan. Is that correct? And I said, basically Jay, that's what it is. But people do agriculture because there's inherent drive to get them done, to get the job done. They get up early, they work late, they get really dirty. I mean, it's not a whole lot of money, but there's that inherent drive. And then I'm not going to read all these slides to you. There's the business side for agriculture, it contributes to our economy. It adds employment tax adds to the base structure. I mean, there's a lot of community reasons of why we do business and specifically agriculture business. And of course, then there's the philosophical side. And one of the things that I like about it, and waiting for the slides to catch up is is it there? Okay. Is feeding our society. As I mentioned before, you know, some of the stuff I put this talk together two years ago. It's interesting, looking back, it's even more important today than it was two years ago. We talked about the food security and self reliance. We talk about feeding our society. COVID-19 has really taught us a lot about that. So there's that inherent philosophical reason of why we do agriculture. Okay, so we know why, now we've got to know how. And for agriculture, and this is right now, I want to strike when the iron is hot. People are far more open to agriculture than they were even six months ago. It's amazing when you go hungry a little while, when you see the shelves start getting a little empty. Agriculture becomes a lot more important. And you'll, I have listed three things down here to agriculture first must be allowed. And it has to be allowed by ownership of the land, meaning it has to be accepted. And whether it's state or private land, the owner of that land has to accept the fact that agriculture is a little bit different. The neighbors also have to accept agriculture. I run cattle in Kohala and I get a phone call and someone is telling me that my cattle are mooing. And yes, they are, that's what cattle do. But it's kind of an interesting thing because people are so removed from agriculture, they kind of lose sight. Agriculture is sometimes noisy, sometimes dusty, sometimes has some odors. But that is agriculture and that's what we have to remind ourselves. But there's a lot of things that agriculture brings. As you can see, open space, carbon sequestration, even aquifer recharge, all of this is part of agriculture. And again, the, the one at the bottom I have there, government has to accept agriculture. One of the things now sitting in this chair that I pushed forth is that agriculture, we should not be concerned about the lease rent on land. We should be more concerned about the, the inherent economy that that land can generate. And that's where their income stream, the tax basis, the taxes on the business itself, not the lease rent, that's what we need to work on. And then of course, to get it done, we have to be creative. And that will come up in a second. We have specialty markets. We can do land management, we can educate people, we can have other production techniques. But what if we start putting all of this together? And coming up with a synergy between all of this. One of the other things I, I touch on is for agriculture to be completely and successful going forward, we have to be inclusive. And I don't care what it is, whether it's conventional, organic, plant, animal, food, ornamental, doesn't matter. It's all agriculture and we must support all. And that's what we need to do if agriculture is truly going to be successful. So we've been through all this, we've had a quick conversation. Talk about agriculture as a whole. We know the demand is there. We know we have the lands and specifically Big Island. We know we have the water. What we have to do is start changing the mindset and the good news about the COVID-19 is this is helping us change the mindset. We are going to change because we have to. We're going to have that paradigm shift because we need the infrastructure and we need the processing capability. I throw this slide up here because when it comes up here a second, it's a little bit tongue in cheek. But I think to the point, we changed our ideas and we changed our mindset of how we handle things. DDT back when I was a kid was the pesticide of choice. They used to use radiation to, to increase growth of plants. And they used to recommend eating Vaseline. Okay, we don't do this anymore, but the point is we shifted. When you learn something that's not the right thing to do, you shift. And so that's what we can do. So a successful future for agriculture as a whole is that we have to patronize our agriculture, not subsidize. We have to accept the inherent value that local agricultural breed will bring. And one of the things that on this is so a paradigm shift, and I like this quote from Neil deGrasse Tyson. When's the last time you changed your mind? That's what we as a society have to do to go forward. So with that future direction. Strive, food self reliance, energy self reliance and economic growth. And I believe agriculture will be that part. Energy. We have to put these things together. The source of energy in Hawaii, and this is statewide, is petroleum 60% renewables 20. Coal is 13, that's primarily Oahu. And then there's some other small generation. Big Island, we don't have coal, obviously. And actually for the big island, we're in the high 30s to low 40s when it comes to renewable energy. And this is just a graphic that shows what the continental US is going. We have the clean energy initiative coming forth that we want to be total renewable by 2045. So how are we going to get there? And this is another graphic from the Huine lecture this shows us, we have a peak of about 200 megawatts. And we're approaching that 50%. We're actually over 50% before the lava episode that wiped out the geothermal. So going forward, we need agriculture, we need energy, let's put this all together. We need a comprehensive water plan, both potable and irrigation, an agricultural plan that builds and rebuilds the local production, but also the value added, the processing. And we need to have a renewable energy. If we put all this together, we'll strive towards that self reliance. But the important thing is what if we combine all these things? And put them together, so pump storage hydro. We have an energy generation that runs water down the hill. And at nighttime uses wind turbines to pump the water back up the hill. We have water that is our energy storage, but we can use that water for irrigation. We can also use that energy for the value added into agriculture, whether it be pre-cooked roast, flash frozen vegetables, whatever the case may be. We start creating the, the economic generator, the agriculture economy in itself, which creates the jobs. We have that whole food self reliance and food self security because of creating all this stuff. And ultimately we lead to economic growth. It's, we, we can't start one of it, we have to kind of start all of it. And this is just some quick graphics to bring that home. We have a reservoir up at higher elevation. We run the water down through the hydras till we drain it in a lower reservoir. And then we use wind turbines to pump that water back uphill and fill the reservoirs again during the time when we don't need the energy typically at night. That water, we can again use for that irrigation, one acre inch, which is one acre of land with one inch of water, it's about 28,000 gallons. If we use this water resource we have here on the big island and specifically I target Waimea, Waimea and Kohala. We have the ability to generate electricity, increase our agricultural production through irrigation and then use that energy into our infrastructure going forward. What that does again is it increases our food self reliance, food self security, energy generation creates the economy and makes our, our community food self reliant and more energy self reliant. So with that, we're just about pow here. Future direction, food self reliance, energy and economy. Waiting for the slides to catch up. I truly believe agriculture will be the, the driver as we go forward. And these are just some job opportunities with agriculture that are support, supporting of agriculture. That one of our guests here, Ag Banking, you know, again, we have financial sides that are all part of agriculture. And winding down here, what I try to do when I'm sitting in council and we come up with these considerations. I try to seek the synergy between the cultural side, the economic side and environmental side. And every decision I make is floating around here, trying to look for that elusive gray center. But trying to balance all of the needs of our community by considering all these things. What I have learned sitting in council is while I'm considering that, through all the testimony, we have emotions and common sense overlying all of this. And that division line slides back and forth depending on what we're talking about. What I try to do is listen to that, but then I try to push it in the background when we're making these decisions. So with that, again, Hawaii Island, ag, water, energy of food nexus, energy production, food production. Waiting for the slide to catch up, environmental management, job growth, economic growth and a successful community. And I want to leave you with this. To catch up, okay. What do these cultures have in common? The Egyptians, Ankor, that's Ankor Watt. We have the Mayan, the Mayan culture and regrettably now Venezuela. What do those cultures all have in common? Well, at one point they were all great societies. They had great advancement in science and or culture, but they're all declining or gone. Why? In part, they forgot about agriculture. And that's one of the things that we need to be mindful. So with that, I'll leave you with pictures of North Kohala and cattle grazing and did that catch up? Questions, that is it, I am done.
Tim, I've got a question. Just curious, what, what do you really see as, as the major entry barrier for, for new people wanting to get into agriculture? I mean, I know luckily it's cost of land, you know, that are
Cost of land. So if we can take, and there's a couple of models out there, like I said, there has to be inherent value that is gleaned by the, you know, we can do, let me shut down. Well, I'm, I'll probably knock myself off. It's the it's a capital investment for agriculture and the cost of our lands here is exceedingly high. There's been conversations about having farm cooperatives or land trusts, things like that. All those are potential models. I think our county and our state really has to step up to the plate and help get this done. Again, it's not the lease hold money that is generating for that economy. It's what that ag economy can generate in and itself. In my mind, that is the important thing. And so that's one of the big barriers. Second to that is the the value adding, the processing. We know you're a banker, so you get this. The closer we get the farmer rancher to the retail dollar, the better off that farming ranching entity is going to be. So what we have to do and whatever structure we have, the cooperative structure or marketing alliance structure, whatever the case may be. We have to get them closer to the retail dollar so they can better stay in business. And so those are two things that I'm working on. More recently, I've been working on another model. I put together what I call a bridges program that because of our COVID-19 deal. Initially, I thought I was going to be supporting agriculture by subsidizing it. I realized that was wrong. What I did was keep the ag economy functioning. And I kept it functioning by having funds to buy commodities from the farmers, have them process, kept the processors open. And then turn around and donate those products to feed the people. And I think that was a better model. And in fact, I've been talked to about wanting to take that statewide and then even making it a permanent project going forward because it supports agriculture would increase value to agricultural seconds while feeding people and supporting farming. So I think that's where we should be taking a lot of this stuff.
Hey, Tim, Keith Merrick, thank you for doing this. I got a quick question because I grew up in La Lamilo farm lots. And one of the challenges, as you know, is there's a lot of the next generation who don't want to keep farming because it's tough. So do we have people who want to farm out there interested even if the property is available?
That Keith, you, you hit one of the problems on the head. And we have a slide, we need to get that one and put it in here about FFA. The FFV back when I was in high school was, I think we had almost 30 chapters across the state and the participation was huge. 10 years ago, we were almost out of it. And now I think we've doubled the chapters in the last four or five years. What we have to do is support that, we, meaning us as a society. Because we have to teach the next generation. There's a couple of young guys here in La Lamilo that are actually getting up and running. And they're actually doing a pretty good job with their farming, but they need help with the capital investment. So Keith, short answer is that's a huge challenge. But there's been a reawakening of agriculture right now. And I think that if we support it, not necessarily just throwing money at it, but give it the value that it truly deserves. And the recognition it deserves, I think we'll get there, but we have to start early. We've got to start teaching people now. And you know, one of the big values that I see with these school guardians and the farm complete programs and all is it's teaching people that farming is not easy. It's not simple, it's a lot of work. And so they have a better appreciation for the food on the plate. So it, it's going to be a, a, like I said, a paradigm shift over time. And it's, it's not going to come quick, but we as a society have to support that by having the programs that allow younger guys to get into farming and wrenching. I, I tell people I'm from agriculture and in agriculture, I think Travis, you're going to laugh at this. In agriculture, you're either optimistic or suicidal and there is no in between. And you know, I choose to be optimistic because in agriculture, it's tough at best. But you have to be optimistic and mother nature, you know, she manages a lot more variables than we do. What we can do is learn and be, pay attention to what she's telling us. And then use everything we can to mitigate some of those things that she throws at us. And it's, it's very possible. We know how important agriculture is to society surviving. But we as a society have to recognize that we have to support it. We can't beat it up all the time. And that's part of the reason why I chose to go into politics is to be sure we have good public policy going forward. We have to have good public land policy, water policy. And you know, even when it comes to environmental policy, we have to be recognizing that agriculture is actually some of the first environmentalists. We don't destroy the land. Some, there are some bad players, but there's bad players and everything. We have to go forward and keep seeking the right way forward. And part of that is we got to tell our, our story better.
Tim, I have a couple of questions for you. One, I wanted to say I'm, I'm really happy that COVID hit when it did. Because I mean, as awful as it is, it, it allows, like you said, for us to have a paradigm shift. Too reliant on tourism, it's not sustainable at all. I'm over in Kona right now and it's a ghost town over here. We're having a little staycation, which is pretty nice, but yeah, so it really allows us in, to have some time, I feel to, to make the shift that we need to before food security for our entire nation becomes an issue. Because as you know, with global warming, this is, this is something that, you know, is going to hit everybody's, you know, front page and, and their tables. So I believe that Hawaii is in a very unique position to be able to provide its own food. So with that, I wanted to find out, in your opinion, having gone through the statistics and everything, is Hawaii County capable of producing all of Hawaii's food statewide?
Is our county capable of producing statewide?
Yeah, could we provide enough food for the entire state, not counting tourism?
For some of the commodities, absolutely yes. For some of the commodities, probably at least 50%, you know. Egg production, absolutely. Poultry production, absolutely. Pork production, probably. Beef production for the state, probably not. We are producing at, at, at our heyday for the beef production in the state, we're produced about 30% of what we consumed. But we could probably produce at least 20 to 30%. Some of our carbohydrates, corn, wheat, things like that, rice. No, I don't think so because our, our climates here are not conducive to that, but that's okay. If we can target going for 50% of our production, I think we're going to go a long way to making ourselves more food self reliant. And you know, touching on that a little bit, there's a huge shift in a drive towards an Ulu cooperative here that is really being managed quite well. And there are some carbohydrates that come out of that. We have ulu flour that comes through that. We can also use, we can do a lot more with taro and the taro chips are, again, it's a carbohydrate. So there are some things we can do and we can expand. Part of that is we're going to have to have a paradigm shift of how we are eating. And so that being said though, I, I'm very confident we could easily get Hawaii County easily to 50% of what we would consume, rough numbers of pounds. So I, I'm very, very optimistic we can get, get that done. Now, in order to do that, we have to have the processing, the value added here in our county. And what I'm looking for, I'm keeping close tabs on this is that I believe coming out of Washington DC, we're going to see public works projects that are reminiscent of the 30s. And that's going to be infrastructure dollars. And to me, that's the time we're going to jump on that and get some of this value adding processing, some of this renewable energy infrastructure. That's where I really want to push forward. Currently, right now I sit on as a vice chair for water on the National Association of Counties organization. And so in going to DC and dealing with our, our national or federal legislators, I'm watching for this stuff to see when that might come forth and jump on it at that point. Because I don't see how this country is going to do recover unless we have a big public works project going forward. I think that's the time we can really make a shift.
I, on the topic of energy production, has anyone looked into using electricity generated by wind turbines and solar to separate oxygen and hydrogen and water and then using the hydrogen for fuel cells or even for combustion?
Absolutely, I haven't updated my slides. Yes, that's something that we can also do because hydrogen, we have enough energy, energy capability, generation capability on this island to actually be hydrogen exporters that we could send to Oahu, even Pacific Rim. If we focus on that, once again, we as a society are going to have to accept this generation, whether it be wind turbines, hydro, whatever. And then actually become, and I use the term manufacturing. But to do that, absolutely, because again, talk about a renewable energy, talk about a environmentally friendly fuel. We have that capability to do here. And yeah, there's actually some projects we're working on right now. There are three hydrogen fuel cell buses available to the county right now that we're trying to get into place. It's more proof of concept than anything else, but we can do it and absolutely without question, absolutely.
Yeah, that would be amazing. I mean, we can change our entire transportation system, you know, everyone could be in fuel cell cars. Yeah, that, that would be extraordinary. But speaking to the topic of manufacturing, I missed you in yesterday's meeting. I was told that you were going to be there at least for the Hawaiian Island Agricultural Food Systems Study. Dan Fleming was hosting at least that subset because it's broken up into many different groups. But as you know, and for everyone else who doesn't know, Dan spoke at one of our meetings, but they're specifically gathering data and trying to do data mapping for the entire island and find out exactly what our consumption is and what our needs are. But this, this study is geared towards figuring out what kind of manufacturing facilities are needed in our, on our island as, as far as food goes for, you know, production preservation, if it's like canning or what have you. And I wanted to know if, how involved you were in that and or what kind of numbers you have regarding what kind of facilities we have, what their capacity is, et cetera.
We are very short on processing and value adding. I can, from the cattle standpoint, back in the heyday, like I said, back in the 80s, we had five times the capability of processing cattle. We don't have that today because we shifted our industry. Even if we held back 25% of the calves we export, we'd have to double our processing, our slaughter facility in our state. We don't have that, but we know we need to get it if we're going to do something. The Ulu Cooperative, they're working on that and they are, they're at their firewalls as, as handling what they're trying to produce. They do fresh frozen ulu. They're working on ulu flour. Again, they're, they're pressed to the limit, they, they can't expand any further. The Shawell avocados, there is an export market there that if we target it, and the county did a pretty good study on this, oh, three years ago, maybe four years ago now, that we can double the net dollars returned back to our local avocado growers. If we target and ship them out of state at the right time before the Mexico comes online. All of these markets are available, but what it takes is the infrastructure to get this shipping going. We need the facilities at the port, sea and air to make this happen. We need the processing plants. And you know, when you use the term manufacturing and processing, people have these visions of big, dirty industrial things. That's not what we're talking about, but they're appropriate words. We need to be able to process these things from the raw commodity to something that we can get to market and that has shelf life, et cetera. That's in part, going to take that energy that you just mentioned earlier. So we have to do this together. You know, this whole silo legislation that I've mentioned in the past, we have to do this in concert with each other. Look at our energy needs and capabilities, look at our food production and needs of what we need to process that and blend this stuff together. We got to work with our energy companies, Helco. We have to work with our farmers, we have to work with our, even our bankers. We have to put this all together and not get so stuck in our little lane that we're not looking at the impact of other things. You know, case in point, there's a hydroelectric plant, there's two in Hilo on the Waikaku River. And they are still waiting to get their permit to use the water. And this is a non-consumptive use. It comes out of the river through the hydro, back into the water. I toured these hydro plants. They have the number, I think it's 1907. And that's the manufacturing date of these hydras. They just want to update this, but they can't update it unless they have a secured permit. They just want to update this, but they can't update it unless they have a secured permit going forward. And this is a failing of government. We haven't updated this stuff to make this thing go forward.
Which agency is holding up that permit?
DLNR.
Okay, interesting. So so I understand, you know, Hua'ua or Honua Ola, as they're known now. They got their permits through DLNR and Department of Health as well, I believe. And then they were basically stalled out by the Public Utilities Commission, correct? And now they're they're seeking to overturn that. But I wonder how they were able to get through all those hurdles and when hydroelectric is is not. But that that definitely is a problem that needs to be addressed at some point. As far as land use goes and the need for land, my understanding is that the Hawaii Island. Has a significant amount of land that's owned by the state and that they're willing to lease the land. But the the requirements for being able to lease the the land are are very significant and difficult to go through. I don't know what they are, but is is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, no, you have two agencies that lease out land to agriculture. DLNR, Department of Land and Natural Resources, and you have Department of Agriculture. I think it's twelve years ago now, Act Ninety was a law passed that mandated shifting all the DLNR. DLNR leases managed by DLNR. Over to Department of Agriculture, because the mission of Department of Agriculture is agriculture. The mission of DLNR is preservation. And so it makes more sense to have ag manage ag. We've run into some hickies on that. And again, it comes down to the premise of of how we're going to manage going forward. We have lands on this, on this island and in this state that we could do better with agriculture. But we have to have the political will to get us to agriculture. And I think I'm one of, there's between county council, mayors, governor, senators, representatives. There's about one hundred and thirty-five of us elected officials statewide, and there's two of us. I'm one of them that come from agriculture. And so the problem is you don't have an understanding of agriculture. So thereby, I we run into policy problems because, you know, they they talk about an ag lease for five years. Five years is a long time, not in agriculture. I I told people, I said, during a five-year lease for cattle, don't waste their time. Because you're just going to be getting the ball rolling, and then you're going to be up for at least renewal. And this is the other thing I talked to Dylan R. about. If you have a good steward of the land, why are you going to put it? Out to open bid for a new person to come in, then let's just take ranches as an example. And I was told, well, that's because we can get a higher lease rent. I said, but again, shouldn't you be more concerned about stewardship of the land? And the economy that's generating rather than trying to throw it to somebody else who's going to pay you a few more bucks a year? That that makes no sense to me. So again, that's that paradigm shift that we need to push. And sitting in this chair now. I opened a few doors a little sooner and I can push a little harder for good public policy going forward. And that's what I'm trying to do.
That's wonderful. I'm I'm done asking questions, but I do want to tell you that I'm working with Kulana Foods right now. I don't know if you're familiar with them, but I'm working with them to expand their facility to increase their capacity. So right now they have plans and but anyways, I I would love to talk to you about that sometime in the future. We only have a few minutes left and I've been hogging the time. I'm sorry, everybody. Is there anyone else who has any questions? Please, please fire away if you do.
Hey, Tim, just a quick non non agriculture question. I mean, obviously, we're in a pretty tough spot county wise and on a meeting I was with you on several months ago. The timeframe you were talking about for us to fully come out of this was something like three or four years. So what what's your what's your outlook going forward? I mean, obviously, we're going to. Leadership at the top, is that going to affect very much the direction in which the council wants to head? What's your what's your thoughts on it?
Yeah, it it's going to. And again, I'm from agriculture. I'm optimistic. We're going to, we're going to do well, okay? Let's start with that premise. That being said, the concern was actually coming out of this in a couple of years. I think it's going to take that. Our unemployment, let's just take the number thirty or thirty-five percent, and I'm not going to waste time arguing. The point is, it's bad. So how do we go forward with that? We won't have tourism come back like it was previous. At any given time, you know, we have two hundred thousand people here in our county. At any given time, we had forty or fifty thousand tourists. We're not going to see that probably for at least another year. If we're going to be seeing it then. From my perspective, again, sitting on these calls nationally, it's kind of a rough number, about a twenty percent reduction in revenue stream for government as a whole. We only cut our budget seven percent, and I don't think that's enough. I think sometime this fall, we're going to be in trouble. So I'm looking forward to federal funds coming forth, because I think it's going to be a public works to get us. And I think we have a time for a lot of construction to come forth. But that being said, getting between here and there is going to be tough, and we're going to have a lot of hungry people. And I think we're going to have to look to programs that are going to support our people. Because we're not going to have the jobs right now, but that's why I want to push this agriculture agenda forward. Because that will create the jobs, jobs that will support our society as a whole. So I I still think we're probably a couple of years away from really being bouncing back unless something shifts tremendously. And that's not pessimistic, that's just realistic.
I saw Kat had a question. I can't go back to it because I'm on the phone and then I'm inept, but. Can you someone pull that up from the chat? Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I was, I've been hearing rumors about our barge and import system being in trouble. And I I don't know exactly what the timeline for that is, but I'm curious if, Tim, you can speak on. Efforts to ensure that food production and barge reliance, like how are we tracking those? Or how do we make sure that that we'll be able to to eat in the interim?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. I it started out. I got involved, and you're talking about Young Brothers and that whole issue. I got involved with it when they wanted a thirty-five percent increase in their tariff because they weren't making ends meet. And I spoke out on behalf of all agriculture, livestock and commodity, that agriculture can't stand that. Okay, then that evolved to me getting involved with the equipment for shipping livestock. And I was happy to share that because I've written a lot of the stuff for Hawaii shipping animals to the mainland. But then along the way, COVID-19 hit and the economy of Young Brothers went sideways on them. And I had been a strong advocate for them to get some of this COVID funding. They asked for twenty-five million dollars to get them from then to the end of the year and to keep functioning with the barge service we need. Without in intrastate shipping, our economy is in trouble. There's no way we're going to survive. And so I told people, I said, look, regardless of your personal feelings on Young Brothers, put that aside for right now. We've got to keep the economy generating while we try and fix that one. I was hopeful, and I did a lot of work as I could down at the legislature to try and get them twenty-five million dollars to make that happen. Our legislature dropped the ball, and I'm really disappointed in that. You know, I I don't want to talk about the criticism of their management because that's not the point. We have to keep this running, and I wanted six months to hit the pause button so we had that infrastructure functioning. Now they're in a real bad way. If we lose intrastate shipping, I don't know what our economy is going to do. You're going to have to declare an emergency. We're going to start running out food very, very quickly. We need to gear up. We're we're talking three to five years to truly gear up and hit the production level we need. And so we need that infrastructure in place. And now Young Brothers didn't get the funding, so they're going to ask for a tariff increase. And I understand their position. I don't like it, but I don't know what else we're going to do. We as a, we got one point two five billion dollars. Relatively speaking, twenty-five million dollars is drop in the bucket, especially if it's going to impact our economy so much. And so I think it was very short sighted that the the Senate did it, the House did not, and I don't understand why. So there's a hearing this week for Young Brothers, and we're in a critical situation for them going forward. Does that answer the question for you?
It it does. It helps me understand the timeline. And then a thought just occurred. I I know some some friends who are in the airline industry. And so I know they're sending me photos of these empty planes going inter-island into the mainland. And so I'm I'm wondering, is there a way where government policy and private business could could sink to fill these needs? You know, they need to have the planes flying and to support their crews and staff, and we need things getting here and there. So I don't know how we can bridge that, but i is there a way to transition so that we're not solely relying on the barge system? During this time where we're strengthening our own food production abilities?
I'm sure they'll take probably take some emergency declarations. There is one thing that I was working on. There is what's called the Marine Highway System. And two thousand eighteen, the waters around Hawaii were designated the Daniel La Caca Marine Highway. This is a federal program where there's federal funding that helps these. Municipalities, and I say that generally because Alaska has an Alaskan Marine Highway System. And there's federal funding that helps subsidize that intrastate shipping. I think Hawaii, I mean, I don't know why we haven't qualified for the funding, but I was trying to seek funding that way for them. Have not been able to get that done, and this is happening so fast, you know. You can imagine state government takes forever and and federal government takes longer. So the the problem is, this is hitting all at a bad time, but the short answer is, yeah, I'm sure there's things we can do there. The question is, and then what? I mean, that that'll be a bridge. But the long answer is we need to have ocean freight between islands, period. How are we going to, as a society, as a community, we have to support that? What does that mean? So right now I advocate for Young Brothers. I'm not thrilled about a rate, a tariff increase because nobody has any money right now. But this is where I think government should have stepped up to the plate and done something for the short term. And then seek that answer in the next six months. So now they're putting especially the outer islands in a precarious position. And this was important enough that when Senator Lorraine was putting forth a resolution to seek some of this funding. I got support from all four councils, Hawaii, Maui, Kauai and City County of Honolulu. Cherry Kika Anderson supported us saying, you know, we're in this together and it doesn't affect Honolulu, but they supported the resolution.
We're after one o'clock, but Charlene had a question. I'd like that to be our last question. Charlene? Charlene, are you still with us? Benson, do you know what Charlene's question was?
No, I don't know, but I think she I think she had to log off.
Oh, okay. Well, Tim, I I should have booked you for four hours because I certainly have a lot more to ask you. But we we have to end here. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Tim, for for speaking. This has really been wonderful. And I thank you, everyone else for for attending. With that.